Awesome, welcome everybody. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Steven Kudur. I'm the Student Senate President for the California Community Colleges, so the SSCCC. I am joined with me today with Dr. Julie Adams, our Executive Director, and also the members of my ISPCTF, which is the Institutional Success for People of Color Task Force. And you might be wondering why we were gathered today. So in the wake of the recent events and the racial climate that our state and the rest of our country has been seeing, the Student Senate for California Community Colleges took it upon themselves to to form a committee. So what we wanted to do is, as an organization, instead of just letting out a statement that say, "We are committed to our students of color and we wanted to be there for them", we wanted to develop an action plan. And we really wanted to see what does it look like to get students of color to be successful? What can we do within our system to actually help them succeed? So this is a forum for students to just express their experiences and their feelings about the racial climate in the California Community College system. This is not an opportunity to put any blame on any individuals or any groups. We're not here to point any fingers. What we're here to do is just collaborate. We're here to speak our minds. We're here to talk as students. And instead, we want to make progress. We want to create an environment where students, particularly the students of color, just feel welcome and able to succeed. This platform is to provide a space for healthy discussion. There's no tolerance for hate speech during our session today. And that's going to result in the SSCCC compiling a plan of action to inform our policy decisions on behalf of our students. What we're trying to get out of today is the students bring forth their stories. They're going to bring forth experiences that they've had on the California Community College campus. We're going to listen to their stories. We're going to formulate an action plan. We're going to take those to our system partners. We're going to take them to the chancellor's office. We're going to take them to Consultation Council and to the Board of Governors and really hope to see some change. So I'm going to pass it off to some of my Institutional Success for People of Color Task Force members. They're going to give a little bit of a rundown on some of the housekeeping and some of the community agreements that we're going to have today. And then we're going to jump right into our program. So thanks again for everyone that's joining us. My first member is our representative from the A2 Men, Joseph Merchan.
Good morning or good afternoon, guys. My name is Joseph. I'm going to read the housekeeping rules for you guys today. This town hall is recorded and will be archived on the Student Senate CCC.org website. Our audience members are on mute. To be recognized, please type your name or identifier in the chat. Monitor will call your name and you will be recognized to speak. Please do not speak until recognized. We ask those who are not students respectfully to allow students to speak. If you have a question, you are free to type it in the chat and it will be asked at an appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Merchan. So those are our housekeeping rules. Everyone's on mute. If you do have a, if you would like to be, or would like to be recognized and like to speak, just please reach out to one of us as a task force members. We're all co-hosts. You can type it in the chat and we will recognize you at the appropriate time. I'm going to now pass it on to one of our other ISPCTF members, and that's Jasmine Prasad. And she will be going over some of our community agreements.
Good evening, everyone. Suspend judgment and keep an open mind. Maintain the essence, dignity, and respect of what is shared. Respect and understand different perspectives. Speak truth and be kind. Speak from what I saw, I felt. Listen for understanding. Respect strengths and weaknesses of all. Balance listening with speaking out. Be mindful of time and sharing with others. As Steven said, we really want to hear our own personal stories and experiences.
Awesome, thank you, Jasmine. So those are some of our community agreements. We're not here to judge anybody. We're here just to speak freely. We want an open forum. This is a platform for students just to get their voice out and be heard. And us as a Student Senate, we're here to be that representative voice hall California Community College students. And what better way than to just sit back and listen? So that's what we're here for. Speak truth. Everyone, please speak from the eye. This is, "I saw this, I felt this", not, you know, "They did this to me." You know, that's not what we're here for. We want to hear the "I saw", the "I felt". So yeah, we're going to move on with our program. And the first part of the program, what we really want to get into is just sharing your story. As students, we all have different stories. We come from different walks of life. We have different experiences on each of our campuses. And we're here to just hear those stories. So the people that are going to be hearing those stories are Institutional Success for People of Color Task Force members. We have Gerardo Chavez. He's from Riverside City College. Tyra Cobb's from Los Madanos College. Donna Delgadillo from American River College. Marlene Hurd from Merritt College. Joseph Merchan from Pasadena City College. Mohamed Mortada from Mount San Antonio College, sorry. Jasmine Prasad from Folsom Lake. Desiree Rodriguez from American River and Doron Walker from President City College. Obviously myself, Steven Kudur, President of Student Senate and a student at Reedley College. And we have a very diverse panel of task force members. We've come from different organizations, different colleges, different ethnic and racial backgrounds. And we're here just to listen. So as I said, we're going to jump into our first part of the program. That's just hearing the stories of our students. And what that's going to look like is we just want students to share their stories on their experiences on each of the campus. So what is that going to look like? We want you to tell us about times where you witnessed racial injustice on your campus. Maybe you felt it, or maybe you saw it. Maybe you might not have felt it, but you saw it, or maybe you seen it because you felt it. So we want you to tell us about a time you were called out in class. Maybe tell us about a time where you felt someone used a microaggression towards you or towards somebody else. I know we just had a recent situation in the Peralta School District where a foreign student was asked to change their name, to anglicize their name because the professor didn't want to pronounce the name, couldn't pronounce it. And that is a microaggression. You know, that shouldn't be on the student to have to anglicize their name just in order to be accepted in that classroom. So this is a time, if you have a story that you'd like to share, we'd love to sit back and listen. Please just type your identifier into the chat so we can call on you and unmute you. And that's what we're here for. We just want to hear your stories. So Ms. Julie, at any time, if a student has put into the chat that they'd like to speak, please just unmute their line and we'll go from there. Joseph, I don't know if I want to put you on the spot right now, but I don't know if you want to start us off as students are trying to get in. Maybe, I know we were talking earlier about some of your experiences on your campus and in the community college system. I don't know if you want to just start us off with one of those?
Yeah, can y'all hear me right? Okay, cool. Honestly, yeah, it's tough being a black man at Pasadena City College when there's 30,000 students and only 200 of them are African Americans. And you know, one of many of, you know, my racial microaggressions, you know, experiences was I had dreadlocks. You know, recently I cut them off like three weeks ago. But you know, I go to school soon, Ty, you know, just to, you know, not only speak about how serious I am about my education, but to show it. You know, and being black, you know, we got to work twice as hard just to earn half of, you know, half of average of, you know, what the non-black people have. You know, so I go to school soon, Ty, and my professor, you know, I'm the only black student in my class, you know, so I already feel singled out. I already feel that I have to, you know, prove myself in a sense, you know? So I walked in, I walked in five minutes late, and you know, he singled me out. He was like, "That's very professional." I'm like, "Yeah, my apologies." You know, I'm on the third story, you know, and there he's like, "It's some professional show, Blake, let alone your hair." You know, like stuff like that, you know, like that takes a lot of, you know, confidence. And it takes a lot of, it takes out a lot of confidence and just performance in the whole, you know, going to school. Because you know, it's like, it's hard, you know? But at the end of the day, it's kind of, you know, there needs to be change and, you know, affirmative action. You know, I'm not the top, I'm from South Central, you feel me? So I'm already from the ghetto, so I work differently, I think differently. You know, but I'm going, you know, taking a whole two-hour bus ride every morning and every night just to get to and from school, just to get racially profiled. You know, that going to school is already hard enough because, you know, I'm not as, you know, might not be as educated in math or English as, you know, other students might be. You know, and it's just kind of, it's stressful, you know? That's reality, you know? And I'm all about respect, you feel me? And you know, being, you know, I'm only 22, so I'm transitioning into manhood, you know, and just learning the fundamentals of a man and all those things that come with, you know, transitioning to manhood and being a black man. So you know, that's one of the many experiences. But you know, I encourage you all to, you know, speak about, you know, your experiences, no matter what your ethnic background is, you know? Wrong is wrong and right is right, you know? Especially being a, you know, if you're a professor, you know, you're required to, you know, you know, give out, you know, these lessons and make school a little bit easier, you know? So as a student, you know, I rely on, you know, knowledge from, you know, professors and, you know, the professors that make it twice as hard, you know? It should, you know, it shouldn't be accepted, you know? So I encourage each and every one of you guys to speak up if you have a story. You know, get your voice listened to, not just heard, but listened to. So, you know, appreciate it, y'all.
And Joseph, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for sharing that. It's very powerful, man. So at this time, what we've done, we've allowed the guests to unmute themselves. You can definitely unmute yourselves and speak up. Just give us an identifier to know that you're wanting to speak. And just share with us your story at this time. This is a town hall. This is a listening tour. We're really focused on just wanting to listen. We're not here to, you know, to just bring out all this doctrine, right? We're here to actually just listen, hear from what our students have to say so that way we can really form a knowledgeable action plan. We were on an A2 Men conference this past weekend. And really, one of the speakers at that webinar said, you know, "How can we see change and know that it's real? And the only way we can actually, you know, focus on what that change is, is to have a correct analysis of what the problem is." So if we can't analyze the problem and know what that problem really is in our California Community College system, there's no way for us to be able to provide an action plan to see success. So we really want to know what is the problem on the campus level right now? And that's why we're here. That's why we want to hear your stories.
So Steven, I have a couple. So Robert, would you like to go ahead and share? You should be able to unmute.
Hi, everyone. I'm Robert. I'm a student at Calbright right now. And I was a student at American River College some years ago. And I had a situation where I was in a philosophy class. And, you know, our professor would share, you know, stories about things that were, you know, were considered by some supernatural events and, you know, the things that were very like important to history. And I wanted to share, you know, something that I had, you know, that I had learned about history. And it was about Nat Turner. And for those of you who aren't familiar, Nat Turner led, you know, a slave rebellion in 1831, you know, where, you know, there was a, you know, major uprising, you know, killed a lot of people and then was ultimately killed himself. But it was so significant that it essentially eliminated the argument that, you know, that slaves were happy, you know, to be slaves. There were a lot of crackdowns on slaves after that, enforcing like codes to, you know, stop them from being able to read and stuff like that, which were already in place in some places. But anyhow, it's very significant, especially to, you know, to black history. And it was cited, you know, leading up to the Civil War in reference by, you know, Frederick Douglass and stuff like that. So very, you know, very important to me. But in the, you know, in the California Community College system, and I don't think that you can really separate, you know, that from, you know, you know, other educational systems, you know, here in California, you know, where black history isn't quite as important. But anyhow, to get to the story, I shared with him, you know, the account of, you know, how Nat Turner made the decision, you know, was considered somewhat miraculous. Some say that it was, you know, that there was an eclipse that happened at the time or, you know, and it was through a certain blueness in the sky that he knew it was time of. But anyway, I shared that. And my professor, he laughed, you know, and said that he had never heard that. And I don't think that he thought that I was joking. And I just thought to myself, wow, you know, something as serious as slavery and the slave rebellion, where people gave their lives to gain their freedom here in the United States, which is supposed to be, you know, the land of the free, you know? And we celebrate, you know, these, you know, we celebrate our forefathers, you know, who, you know, freed the country from England, you know? But, you know, my forefathers who tried to free themselves from slavery after that, you know, get laughed at. And I just thought that, you know, maybe, you know, maybe if we were talking about history that wasn't specifically black history, he would have had a little bit more reverence, you know, for the subject matter. And that's something that irreverence is something, you know, that I experienced, you know, prior to coming to the community colleges and after leaving, you know, the community colleges and going into the CSU system. And I think we just have, you know, I've just experienced a lack of appreciation and reverence really for, you know, for black history, for black president, really for black lives. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Robert. Thank you for sharing. Ms. Julie, is there another?
No, I don't have any more right now.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Robert. Yeah, I think one of our other task force members had said that, you know, there's very, there's very much of a lack of black history and really intertwining a lot of black culture into a lot of our subjects. So that's something that we definitely need to tackle into our community college system. We've opened up the chat. So if you'd like to write something down in the chat, we definitely would love to hear that. If you have, if you want to just raise your hand or even just unmute yourself and speak at this time, now's the time to do that. I saw Treasure from Region 2.
Hey, my name is Interpol Dollywall. Oh, can I start speaking?
Yes, thank you.
Of course. Hey, my name is Interpol Dollywall. I'm a student at Sierra College. And one incident that I faced was my friend and I, so we were taking a class together. And I've been late maybe twice. He's been late multiple times to the class. And we walked in late to the class and we were late to the quiz. And the teacher looked at us and when we walked in and he was like, naturally, he was upset, but he just said, "We are late again." And we were just laughing and we didn't laugh like out loud. We're like, "My bad." We apologized. And we were going to go sit down and when a kid next to us said that, "Is that how you do it in your country?" We, in that moment, there was a lot of mixed feelings. And my friend decided to speak out about it. And he called him out and he was saying, you know, like, "What gives you the right to say that?" And it kept going to the point where the professor tried to calm the class down and said, "Let's just move on." And then my friend, instead of like calming down, he said, "He's being racist." And he said it like three times. And what was like really, wasn't a shock because it's really normalized. But instead of like pointing it out, confronting it, the professor just ignored it and just moved on. It happens all the time. And it's sad to see and it's always sad to hear about.
And thank you for sharing. I think I saw another hand go up. Was there another hand? I see Ashley Brandt from Miracosa.
So my experience isn't necessarily something that was directed towards me. But there was a time a while back while I was trying to work with other clubs to like, see if we could arrange hikes between two different clubs, you know, coming together. I went to a Black Student Union meeting and something that was really eye-opening for me was how, when they were starting their meeting, they were talking about their personal experiences and their classes and how they're being singled out for things that like I see other students do all the time. And in addition to that, when I was like trying to transfer colleges or looking into things that would be accepted, a lot of, I didn't really see any colleges accepting my black, it was African-American history. But they would accept European history, which I found very odd. So those were things that were kind of shocking to me.
And that was for transfer requirements?
Yeah, transfer requirements. They accept American history and European history, but they wouldn't accept African-American history.
Wow. Thank you for sharing. Really appreciate all you students stepping up and having the courage to speak right now. That's great. Was there another hand that went up? I thought I saw another one. If I missed you, please just unmute yourself and ask to be recognized.
Treasure Region 2. What was your name again? If you don't mind me asking?
Interpol Dollywall. You can call me Paul.
Oh, okay, cool. When, you know, the encounter happened, you know, what? You spoke about, you know, like how it went down. How did you feel, you know? And what, feeling the way you felt? What tangible, you know, action plans would you, you know, suggest? If you don't mind me asking?
The first thing is how I felt. I kind of laughed and sat down while my friend kept arguing because every time I've argued about it, which is actually not that much because racial profiling and what I've seen, I've been singled out a lot. So fighting about it just made things worse. So instead of like fighting, I just sat down. But he fought and that was really great to see because he stood up. And my feeling for it was just like, let it go. But now that I'm in a different state of mind and where I am in life, I would want to see that a professor stand up for stuff like that, for racial injustice. They need to be like, "That wasn't okay and you need to leave class right now." If he would have said that, no other student would have ever thought it again. Or even, I mean, even like thought of it, they wouldn't at least speak out. And I know the thinking part is a problem too, but speaking out about it, it hurts. When they say things like that, it's like, "Well, I'm born here." Yeah, I mean, I came back from India all the time, went back and forth and fluctuated. I'm born here and I have every right to be here. And yes, I'm late. I have an A in that class. I'm doing well. And I was late because of the inconveniences I faced. What do you know? And it was, that's how I felt afterward. But when at first, the initial thought happens and it like initially happens, you just, you feel hopeless. And it sucks. But if there's a professor, and every time, because it's happened to me since elementary school, if a teacher can stand up for it, it makes the biggest difference. But they never do.
It does. I hear you on that because it's like the same thing. It's like the same philosophy, I guess, with, you know, with crooked cops. You know, if the good cops, you know, if the good cops, you know, stood up and spoke and called out the, you know, the crooked cops, you know, that, you know, that will make, you know, a big, you know, big impact because, you know, the professor, you know, is kind of, you know, is in charge of the room, you know? And I hear you on that, man. You know, it just needs to stop. You know, I feel like, you know, taking accountability to step up, whether it's yours, whether you're in that situation or not, you know, speaks volumes, you know, about your character, about you are, you know, who you are. You feel me? And I think, you know, that I appreciate you, you know, for speaking up. And can you remind me your name again? I want to get the pronunciation correct. Don't let, you know, don't give nobody, you know, a shortcut to your name.
Yeah, I actually agree with that and I'm actually turning to that. My full name is Interpol.
Interpol?
Yeah, Dollywall.
Interpol Dollywall. It was a pleasure, bro. I'll send you a private message to, you know, give you my contact information. We could, you know, keep in contact.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, Robert Cavanis, you know, if you don't mind me, you know, speaking and asking you a question, you know? You kind of spoke on, you know, your situation. But if you don't mind, you know, can you speak about how you felt and, you know, what tangible action plans you would, you know, like to see?
Sure. So, yeah, I felt, you know, I felt like a true minority. And honestly, I felt a little betrayed because, you know, my professor was himself a man of color. He wasn't black, but he was a man of color. And it was worse because, you know, the examples that he was given, you know, they were respected. He was giving examples from all around the world, the incident at Fatima in Portugal and, you know, all these other places. And then when I, you know, when I brought my incident, you know, it just wasn't, you know, it wasn't affirmed as being something that, you know, that had any value, that could, you know, that could be true. But really what I wanted to see was, you know, I wanted to see, you know, a time where, you know, I could share something and my stuff be, you know, my experiences or, you know, cultural background be validated. And, you know, that's something that, that's something that I actually worked on, you know? After, you know, after I got out of there, you know, I was very active. Very active in student government. I was very outspoken as a student. I was very, very, you know, made myself very much available to participate in any type of like, you know, extracurricular activity, you know, where we could share education and stuff like that and just formed a better, you know, a better working relationship, you know, with students and professors. And I spoke out, you know, against stuff in that lack. So, you know, I mean, so it's really, you know, as a student, you know, I realized at some point, you know, that I had, you know, I had, you know, I had a responsibility to change the environment, you know, that I was in. And I actually, you know, and I actually thought about something that, you know, that happened, you know, when you were talking about, when you were talking about your experience. I was thinking about the, I was thinking about the Crown Act that passed last year, you know, that, you know, that made it illegal to discriminate against someone based on their hairstyle, you know, or hair texture. And it just kind of like let me know that it's, you know, that that type of, you know, that type of discrimination, you know, is, you know, is so pervasive. You know, I never, you know, I would never laugh at anyone, you know, if they, you know, if they made mention about something that happened in the Holocaust, you know? I would just, I would just listen, you know? And if I had, you know, something to say about it, I would ask. If I had a, you know, a question or a point of contention, you know, I would do it as respectfully as possible. But I just realized that, you know, it's 2020 and, you know, we're still, you know, we're still, you know, facing these things. And it, you know, and it might not, you know, it might not, there might not never be a time where, you know, I won't have to speak out against it or identify it. I just, you know, I just know that I have to do my part, you know, that I can't stand idly by. That's what, you know, that's what those situations let me know, you know, that I have work to do, you know? And I have to make sure, you know, it gets done. Thank you.
We have another, thank you. We have another question from Hillary for a story.
Oh, first of all, I just, I want to thank the students for sharing. I'm a faculty member and it's great to be able to listen to you guys. And the only thing I had to say is it appears the chat's disabled. So I'm seeing prompts for us to ask questions. And if you wanted them asked in the chat, it looks like the chat's disabled.
Awesome. Thank you for bringing that up. We'll definitely tend to that right now. I see another hand from, I want to say Ira Keen, City College of San Francisco.
Hi, my name's Ira Keen and then I'm from CCSF. And then I think something that comes to mind with me in a discussion of racial injustice is the institutional racism that's at my campus and maybe in other campuses too. And by that, I mean academically, how, for instance, our black students are being treated or how our African-American Studies program is being treated. Because at City College right now, the African-American Department, they don't have a full-time faculty member. They don't have an African-American representing the department either. And also the Black Student Union, they don't even have their own private space. Someone did a study, the previous African-American Department Chair about the racism that's African American Department Chair about the racism that's at the college by the lack of diversity or the lack of faculty members um within the entire college because it's less than 6%. And I find that really very stunning because I was talking to someone who said that, um, they need to have that representation, speaking as someone that is not black because it just helps support people. And right now, we're just trying to push for, um, having African American Studies Department be revitalized as it should be. So I'm, I'm curious to hear what other people's departments are like in terms of that aspect. Then I really, um, appreciated that people are sharing their stories like Joseph and, um, everyone else too. So thank you.
Uh, one thing that I do kind of want to bring up, you know, I'm all about being genuine and all about being real, you feel me? You know, uh, uh, I would say, you know, don't sugarcoat none. You know, get the truth out, don't sugarcoat, don't coast, which be real, you feel me? And I, and I appreciate, you know, everybody speaking up, you know, y'all voices matter, you know, keep, continue to speak up, you know, because y'all helping us help you guys, you feel me? And just, you know, we're united, we stand in, divided, we fall. Which one you going to choose, you feel me?
Yeah, we have another student, Giselle.
Hi, hello. Uh, my name's Giselle Siddy and I am a student at the Summerville College here in Sacramento. Um, so, uh, my story is more related to what, um, I can't remember the, the individual's name, um, from Sac- City of, from City College of San Francisco. Um, it's kind of similar here in my school as well. As far as I'm concerned, in the African American History, uh, that class, it's only taught by two professors and then they're both white males. Um, which, you know, I tried to not see as a hindrance. So I took the class anyway, but, um, you know, at first I was, I was very pleased, you know, the information was, it, it seemed unbiased and, and it seemed very, um, helpful and, you know, um, it seemed like it was, um, you know, just a typical African American course, a history course and, uh, near like the end of the semester, um, the professor decided to read a excerpt from a, from a book that African American author had wrote and, um, you know, I, it was really odd to me because at the end of that excerpt, um, there is the N word in it. And, um, I wasn't really, you know, our professor did prepare us for it, but I didn't really think that he would actually read the, the word out loud, the actual word, like he would kind of, you know, uh, you know, maybe say just the N word, but he, he said the whole word, uh, with the hard R. And, you know, I'm a black student, you know, so, and I was maybe one of three black students that were in that class. And it was pretty awkward for us, I think, you know, to hear a, a white man saying that word um, out loud. And I know it's for, I mean, I guess it was for academic purposes, but you know, I don't feel like that was extremely necessary for him to actually use that word um, in that class setting, especially because it can give people that are not black that idea that, oh, you know, I can use that word even if it's, you know, it might just be for academic purposes, but I can still use that word. So, um, that's all I have to say.
I think I have a very, very, very similar, you know, uh, um, you know, encounter with that situation that you guys were speaking about, you know, like with my class, you know, it was a English 1A, you know, when it's only me and two other students are African American. And 40 students in my class in total, you know, they read a letter from, uh, Martin Luther King that he wrote from Birmingham jail. You know, I missed class prior, I missed one class prior to that specific day, you know, so I came in like five minutes late, you know, so I didn't really know what to expect, you know, so I'm all by respect, so I greeted her, you know, and I told her, you know, hello, how you doing, you know? Sat down, right, literally 10 minutes later, you know, a, 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 a student from the, from the Latin X, uh, La- Latin, Latin, Latin X community, you know, uh, he, he, he read the word, uh, he read the word with, uh, there, he read the word three times. And they said, with the hard E R, you know? I looked at Maya and I looked at Antonio, you know? They didn't speak up, they were afraid to speak up, so I spoke up, you know, and then I set a meeting, you know, with, with, with the dean and, you know, and my professor, you know, and my professor didn't even get a slap in the hand. And she, and I, and I asked her, are you willing to write, you know, a apology letter, you know, and speak it up to the class? She said, yes, but guess what? It happened. She didn't even get a slap in her hand, so, you know, stuff like that is unacceptable. You know, and that's, and that stuff got to, you know, it got to stop, you know, so. In that kind of point, my bad, my bad, I was speaking a little too much. Let me just make one more point. Sorry, you know, that point that you made with, 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 you know, if I said it, they might be comfortable saying, no. If I read that word, if I read that specific paragraph, I would bleep that word out because if I said it, you know, it's like, oh, they, he said it, a black man said it. So I might be feeling too comfortable, so let me say, no, no, it's unacceptable. Whether, whether, you know, it's a racial term, i- it's, it's derogatory, you know? And, you know, stuff like that, you know, it's, you know, a discipline.
Joseph, we appreciate you. We appreciate you. I have a couple of questions from faculty that want to know how students feel, so.
Yes. Yeah, I was actually going to ask one of them because it kind of has stemmed from what we're talking about right now and it was the next question I was actually about to ask. So thank you, Kim, thank you, Kim, for raising this question. And, and to me, um, this is one of the questions that I've been trying to raise as my administration is, when, when issues like this occur on your campus, are there policies in place or are there avenues in place for you to voice your concern? Did you feel in those situations where an issue arose on your campus that you could turn and go to somebody and say, hey, I experienced a microaggression in my classroom? Or, um, you know, did you, did you have that open line of communication with your faculty, with your administration, with, you know, with your students, with your associated student government? Is, are those avenues there in place? Uh, I, I'd like to hear from the students on that. I see, uh, Interpol Dollywall again. Go ahead.
Uh, just gonna make this quick. Uh, I was actually kind of quiet in the beginning when this happened and then, um, that friend I made, he was, he's been my friend since and it was kind of the first friends I made coming out of high school. Uh, but when that all started, uh, I think as being a quiet kid and not coming out all the time and talking to people, I didn't know my avenues or what options or resources I had to confront this. So like, that's the biggest thing is that when you feel singled out, you just feel like you're just going to walk home with it. And that's it. And that's what I've been doing since I was a kid, so, um, I wouldn't know. And actually, till now, um, even now, I think I do the same thing. I just walk home with it and then deal with it like in a different manner. But the more I come to like the realization, I think I can fight it on the spot as long as I keep like pushing for it.
Yeah, thank you. Any other students out there? I know a lot of the faculty are asking like, how, how can they be of support in a situat- if a situation, if a situation like this arose, how can they help you, um, in getting this across to the rest of the administration? What are, what are some of the policies that are on the campus that, that might be able to be revised in order to help students if a su- situation like this arose? I see some of the chat going off. Is any, anyone willing to share what they put in the chat right now as, um, as a verbal statement?
Um, well, I guess what I wrote in the chat was I had a, a white English professor over the summer who used a few stories that had the N word with the hard R and, um, I didn't really know who to talk to about that. Uh, it's just, I feel like maybe if he was gonna try to do something with like a cultural background or something, maybe include like more black authors or like just authors are from different backgrounds. It was a lot of authors from like 1920s and like post-colonial stuff that just doesn't really like give black characters a name, just kind of describes them as part of a background. And if we're trying to be more inclusive in general, it'd be a good idea to branch out and find new materials to teach, uh, the classroom.
We have a couple of questions in the chat. Do you see them? Even?
Yeah, Mr. Lee, if you can address them, that'd be great.
Yes, let's see. Um, I think, uh, Robert would like to speak and then Gritaj.
All right, Robert, and then Gritaj?
Sure. Um, so, uh, just a little background, I, I had the same, had the same situation, uh, at American River College. Um, our professor, he had us reading of Mice and Men. And, uh, the N word is in the book, you know, with the hard R and, you know, he, you know, he read it, he said the word, used the hard R and really just like, uh, enunciated when he, you know, when he did so. And then he went on to explain to the class, which was like, I don't know, you know, majority, you know, majority white, there may have been, you know, two or three black students in there, including myself, who were silent and I, and I do regret doing that. Um, but he went on to explain how, um, you know, as a white man, you know, you need, he said, you need to feel it as a white man, you know, there's nothing that you can say to me, uh, you know, to make, you know, to make me feel, um, you know, to make me feel this way and, you know, and you know, and in one sense, you know, you know, maybe that's true, but in the other sense, you know, I almost got the feeling that he was kind of like, um, like reveling in some, you know, sense of like, um, you know, invincibility, you know, or something like that. And that's partly because, you know, he said earlier that, you know, for the books that, you know, that he reads and he likes, you know, he said he likes old dead white guys and that'd be, you know, and that's fine and dandy and stuff like that, but then you go and make a statement like that. Um, but I thought about it, um, I thought about that, you know, when another incident happened, um, you know, where someone, um, you know, I knew someone had, had spoken out against something in class. Um, and, you know, it went to the administration, uh, it, you know, it just blew up, it was in the news. And, um, and they, the result was that, uh, the campus, uh, they, they instituted, um, like, I don't know what they did, but they did a, they did something where they started another class. Um, it was a class on like genocide, genocide studies, uh, because it was a Native American girl who had, had spoken out, uh, in the class. And, um, I just think that students need to feel, uh, feel empowered to speak out because if you, if you make a comment in public, that's, that's offensive. I think that the person that you offend has the right to make a comment in public, you know, as well.
Can you listen?
I, I. implement some type of policy or make some type of statement where, you know, in these instances where you have, you know, some type of racism going on in class, especially by the instructor, particularly by the instructor that the students, you know, won't be, uh, won't be punished or penalized, uh, you know, for, for speaking out and trying to rectify the situation right then and there.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I think, uh, even in the chat, some students are even talking out where the, you know, the, um, the, the avenue that's in place to be able to speak out isn't really that great and they, they are scared about the retaliation and even maybe even the faculty tenure process where nothing short of a faculty member being thrown in, thrown in jail will really, um, you know, get them in any sort of trouble on the campus. So, um, Gritaj, I know you were next and then, um, I saw Gerald. Gerald, you're going to be right after.
Uh, hello, everybody. I'm Gritaj Garwal. I'm from Woodlake Community College. And, uh, I kind, I was looking at the chat and I really, I really like the idea if like each college had like that idea of like the peer mentors, like, like idea for this could be like, um, they can have students from like different ethnic backgrounds and they could set be like peer mentors on each campus where they could like, um, where, where students that come to and I talked to that issues with the professors or like, or anything they have issues with. And I think this will really benefit if they had like the peer mentors. And I, I really like the idea I saw on the chat.
Yeah, thank you, Gritaj. Uh, Gerald? Gerald Richardson?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, so, while I don't have a, um, a particular instance of racism on campus because it's a recurring theme in my day-to-day life, I do know something that's particularly affected me is that not having a space to go to wherein I could kind of express these issues without retaliation and express my issues and grievances of racism where things could act, actually be done against them and there could be some type of punitive measures in place against these students and faculty members who uphold racism. So I guess my suggestion would be something that I think that would help me is not, um, reporting it to our associate students because that historically has not worked for our black students and not reporting it to our administration. I think there needs to be some type of shared governance in place between our black student unions or, um, Latin X clubs and our Omega Clubs with our administration. So there could be some accountability between those two groups.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. Um, you said that in the past, the, the Associated Student Government, um, hasn't been able to reach out on your behalf. Is there a way that we can empower those student government leaders to be able to um, provide that avenue between those black students and, and the faculty and administration?
I think that's a bit idyllic. I, I don't think, um, while it's good, um, I think a lot of times our administration and our associate students and people in positions of authority often put themselves in self-induced titular positions where they can't, um, can't leverage their authority or can't leverage their power to make change because they're afraid of retaliation against their tenure or these are their colleagues, these are the people they work with, they're not interested in. I guess it gets, it's gets a lot, it gets political. So I think there needs to be some people who don't necessarily have a stake in the game, like our Black Student Union, some student peers.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I see a hand raised from GCC Black Student Union.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to, okay, here I am. I just wanted to comment on that and, and sorry, I'm just joining. So, um, I caught, um, the tail end of a, a couple of experiences, but I think it's re- um, really important that when we're talking about the experience of racism on campus and things like that, that this isn't the issue of an individual, this isn't, um, and this is not the responsibility of students. This is a culture that, and this is in, and these are institutions that are rooted in, um, racism and this notion of white supremacy and it was not intended for, um, non-white people to succeed here. So when there needs to be a correcting of the issue, it has to be systemic changes in the culture of the institution that is evaluated and that shows up in the hiring um, and ensuring that, um, people are receiving these anti-bias, anti-racist trainings like faculty, people in the student leadership. But, um, I think it's really important to address what the issue actually is and it is that this is systemic racism. This is a centuries-long reinforced institution of, um, white supremacy. So when you have these classrooms that, um, the, or these institutions where the faculty are primarily white or, um, you know, there's this exclusion or there's this segregated campus and teachers are, I've, um, we've had, um, accounts as well of people in our Black Student Union at Glendale College, um, where teachers have said the N word with the hard R in class and that speaks to a culture of, um, that they felt empowered, um, and safe enough to be able to do that without having that layer of accountability. So there has to be the addressing of the syst- um, the systemic issues in a systemic way and that culture needs to be addressed as well.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much for sharing that. Um, I'm seeing a lot of discussion in the chat and I'm loving it. I'm, I'm thankful for everyone and I would love to hear some of what you're putting in the chat. If you could just verbally, um, make it known so that way maybe some people that are, um, calling in instead of uh, on the Zoom today can, um, can respond to those also. And I don't want it to take away from, I really want to give my full attention to the speaker and I don't want to have to be reading a paragraph um, while, while I'm trying to do that. So I, I love the chat, keep it going. Um, but at the same time, I would love to hear some of those voices, um, also.
Uh, quick, uh, just some quick, uh, there's a question that, uh, uh, Mr. Jeff Waller asked. He said, is the SS CCC able to respond to a student who feels their He said, is the SSC triple C able to respond to a student who feels their concerns are going unheard at their college, possibly sending someone to that college to mediate?
Awesome. Yeah, that's a great question. So here's the thing, the Student Center for California Community Colleges, we're the representative voice of all the 2.1 million students that are in the California Community College system. And something that we're trying this year that hasn't been a top priority is really empowering the students to be able to, to respond to issues like this. We really want to empower those student governments to be able to know what their rights are as students. You know, they have a right to sit at the table for, for so many different issues in committees and being able to respond to issues that happen on their campus. When, when issues do, do come up, we, we really want to respond. We try and get out press releases and then we go, especially if it's something systemic, like the DCC Black Student Union was talking about. We want to go to the chancellor's office and say, hey, this is happening across the state. This really needs to see change, you know, we need to see an actual plan for change. You know, with, with some of what had happened recently with like our, our foreign students in the, the SCVP program, you know, we, we reached out, we, we really wanted to put out a press release. We signed on to litigation. That's, that's something we wanted to do in response. So what we want to do on, on singular issues that happen on campuses, we really want to step in. We, we did it last year with Deansa College, where, you know, they, they weren't wanting to recognize the student government as, as the representative student voice. And as CCC did go in, we talked to the board of trustees, we were there to represent. So we are the collective voice. We would love to hear your stories. We would want to step in and help out as much as possible and as much as we can. And, and getting your opinion on, on what, what that best looks like, you know, that, that definitely would help.
We have participants that rose their hand. I believe that was Ms. Era Kian. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing it. You know, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, so that's Era. And I think I'm hearing from a lot of people saying that there's this need for anti-racist training, like the DCC Black Student Union mentioned this, and various other students. So I'm wondering in terms of SSC, if that could be incorporated in terms of like a resolution for all community colleges where there needs to be anti-racist training when it comes to the grievance process or when people are getting reported, because it's not being heard, I'm hearing, and people are afraid of retaliation too.
Awesome. Thank you for bringing that to life.
Anti-racist training, I liked it.
And the whole grievance process, that's something that needs to be looked at also. I see two other hands. The other hand I see is, is Jeff, Jeff Waller, and then Brandon Delatorre.
Hey, I just want to say, I appreciate that you guys put this together. I think this is really helpful. And I asked that question earlier, and I was curious if there was more interaction between the SSCCC and community colleges possible. So for example, talking to students and seeing if there's a college that has a good model that could sort of become a best practices thing that could get disseminated to all colleges. Or even, you know, we try to have students on most of our committees that are college. I was curious if there was any connection or liaison possible to between faculty and the SSCCC to better make a connection to communicate things quicker between what you guys are talking about and how that could translate to colleges.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you for those questions. Yeah, right now, you know, we, we sit on the statewide committees and we, we do work a lot with the Academic Senate. I meet with Academic Senate once a month. So that's our, our network there. We, what we're truly, truly trying to do this year is empower those students to be able to sit on those participatory governance committees on their, on their local level. And we do have what you would call, I guess, liaisons. Every student or every student government has one voting member for each region. There's 10 regions that, that we split up the state into that have representatives. So the, the, each, each region has about 10 colleges. They report out to, to their regional affairs director. And that regional affairs director sits on the Student Senate for California Community Colleges on the Board of Trustees or the Board of Directors. So the way that we have that communication is if, if an issue comes up on campus, they bring that to their, their region. The region tries to deal with it. SSC triple C is, is in that region. And we really try to tackle that. And, and issues that, that do stem from that, we, we do want to deal with the Academic Senate and, and fact, the Faculty Association. And we deal with them on a regular basis. And we really try to attack, try to tackle those issues together. I hope that answers a lot more of your questions. I'd love to reach out and really speak about that a lot more with you.
Stephen, there's one question in the, in the chat I'd like to, like to ask. And I know that we had someone, and I think it's Indrapal mentioned this, about the situation in the classroom. And the question is, is how do faculty, what advice could we give to faculty if the situation arises without, and I think it's Ariel mentioned, how can a teacher attend to a situation without picking a side?
Yeah, how can, how can faculty address a situation that arises without picking a side, one or the other? Is that what the question was, if I understand that correctly?
Yes, and he mentioned it. He, he mentioned that he would have liked to see the, the student kicked out of class. But I wonder, it would have been more productive to stop the classroom right at that moment and talk about the situation and, and what it generated. And so how, what advice would students give to a faculty member in that situation where some, a microaggression happened, or somebody, the student felt as if they were being called out on something? How can faculty kind of help to mediate those, those situations? I think that's the question getting to it. If Ariel wants to expand on it, please do.
Yeah, while we're, while they're formulating an opinion on that and getting some, some evidence to support that. I know we have the, the raising of hands, Brandon, Sydney, then Dina Rubio. Brandon, you can go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Brandon Delatorre and I'm a regional delegate from Rio Honda College. And I think the importance, like, for like anti-racism or like workshops can be like implemented during like orientation week, when students sign up for the campuses. And then one thing that we have at Rio Honda College is that if we, if a student signs up for like the club or organizations such as student government or speech and debate, for instance, debate team, they have to take, or they have to have like, kind of like, more of like, you know, the sexual harassment, like training and how to like identify that. And I think that could be good for like, like when, when it comes with anti-racism and discriminatory like policies. And one thing we can do, another solution we do is like, when you sign up for the college, there should be a handbook of all the resources and all the, like the resources that fit the criteria that you feel that you were kind of like, you were harassed. So it would make a much easier process for you to get those resources. And then one thing, final thing, I think, I, I have this profound issue with my college right now, is that they're, they're pushing this like anti-racism platform to their institution, but yet they don't hire enough black professors. Frankly, we only have like, let's say like five black professors. And that's not enough. And predominantly, like our campus is full of white professors. And I think that's an issue of equity and, and, and a lot of like, especially our institutions, like predominantly minorities. And if they see like professors who are like, and like they're wearing the same shoes, they have more like a motivation to succeed. And I think that'll be a good solution. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. So Sydney, Dina, and then Jorge?
Hi, I wanted to respond to Ariel's question. So I think that if faculty or teachers, or really anyone that is going to come into contact with students undergoes that anti-bias, anti-racist, or Abar for short, training, then that, in addition to, you know, peer mediation and conflict resolution and how to handle those situations, then they will be equipped with the tools to handle conflicts. And it's not necessarily, if there is a dispute between two students from different backgrounds, it's not necessarily racially motivated. I don't know the whole situation, but if it is, that could be a learning moment. But I think that usually what happens, and there was a comment about kicking the student out of class, is that when something like this happens, it could be a learning moment. But our first reaction is to respond in a punitive disciplinary action way. And that is very harmful. So I think that if faculty or teachers are equipped with those tools to deal with conflicts and to have those conversations regarding anti-bias and anti-racism, then they can resolve those issues on their own or in a different way, that is, in a transformative healing way versus how can I punish you? But there's no need to take a side. There is, if there is an immediate conflict, I feel like with those tools, you can address it effectively.
Awesome. Yeah, I think more professors, if they had those tools, would know how to respond in those situations for sure. Yeah, thank you for those comments. We have a bunch. Dina, Jorge, then Robert. Or Dina then Robert. I think I'm saying that right. Is it Dina, Dinah Rubio, Aloney College?
Yes, thank you. Hey, Sydney, thanks. That was, that was really great. I really appreciate everything that you're saying. I do believe as faculty, though, we do have to take a side. We are taking a side. If we stand up and talk to that person, it doesn't have to be defensive or punitive. But the conversation had to have been made, you know, right at that moment. Oh, look at my terrible room. I'm sorry about that. Okay, so another thing, Nikwana Shaw had mentioned, had asked a question in the chat about how students feel about being participants in their class as, as peers. And if teachers can understand that we need to be facilitators of a learning environment that, that the students in the class are just as much of the teachers as we are, then that can help change that, that mindset of students feeling a balance out the power dynamic between teachers and students. And students might feel more willing to, to make that comment and, and confront the racism that occurred. So at Aloney, we're trying to get, we have a working group going to try to talk about this and figure this out. And some comments that students have made have been incredibly helpful. For instance, like how do you set up an avenue for people to, to talk about these microaggressions as they occur, so that there could be some intervention from faculty and, and administration with that particular teacher? Also, trying to train teachers as they come into school as part of an orientation to, with anti-bias, anti-racist thinking and teaching practices. So using the ASOC as a, as a liaison is another great suggestion. And so I'm just making notes. We're gonna do your things that I haven't necessarily thought about. So I really, really appreciate the students' comments. Help educate us about what, what's needed also. So thanks very much.
Thank you. And we appreciate you being on the call. We're gonna have Robert and Emilio then Jorge.
To the point that was made about the need for some form of shared governance between student government and the faculty. I know that years ago SAC State, when I was part of this, part of this process, created a position called the Equity Relations Officer, who was tasked with being the liaison between students and faculty, specifically in instances where a student was accused of some type of impropriety, like, you know, academic dishonesty, or, you know, or some other form of misconduct. But in addition to, to being a student advocate, you know, where your job is to try to get the, you know, try to get the student's side out, that, that, that individual also sat on the Faculty Senate Subcommittee that made policy recommendations for, for the institution. So with, so with that, I mean, you could, I mean, the student ostensibly would also be responsible for making policy recommendations, you know, in regards to, in regards to maybe reprisal, you know, policies or, or forms of administrative remedies, you know, for a student. So that's just, that's just one thing, well, that's just one thing that I, that I have seen. And it was, you know, relatively effective. And obviously, you know, this student is, you know, is part of student government, you know, they're in the position, you know, for a semester or an, or an academic year. You know, and they can do these, you know, they can do these things at, basically at their, you know, at the whim of, you know, student government or student in need.
Awesome. I like that. It really empowers that student to make effective change on their campus. All right, we had Emilio and then Jorge.
Hi, my name is Emilio Salas. I'm the Regional Affairs Director for Region Two. One thing that I thought was amazing, how fast my college, Folsom Lake College, did right away is so the president of the college made an advisory group for racial equality and justice. And so right now we have four different cultures. So there's black and African Americans. And each one of these culture groups is split up by a representative of a student, a faculty, a classified faculty, and then an administration administrator. And they're all split up. So the four cultures that we have is Latinx, black and African American, Asian Pacific Islanders, Native Americans, as well as two representatives from the Equity Center that supports all people of different races. And they, this board holds like 22 representatives, as well as the president of the college and the executive team. And I think that this is something that we should try to implement in a lot of other colleges. Just because we're not only getting a perspective from one different position, we're getting perspectives from like the students, the faculty, and other administration. And I just think it's really important. For me, I represent the Native Americans, the Native American population. And we hold our term for like a year. And we try to meet up as much as possible to try to make anything on our campus as safe as possible for our students. And I think that this is something that I think other colleges should implement in their systems as well.
Yeah, thank you. Any resources that are available to students to be able to further their successes is great and it's very valuable. Jorge, you're next.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jorge Silva. I am a Region Excess Community Affairs Officer. And I'm also IVC Superior Volocologist, AIG President/Trustee. But what I speak on is not, you know, I'm part of ASG or anything. It's from me as a person. And so let me do a little background. I was born and raised Mexicali until eighth grade, so considerable amount of time. And I come here every weekend. So I live, I'm Mexican and I always will be, no matter if I'm a citizen or not. And so my first year was in high school in the US. My first year in the US was in high school. And right now I'm in my second year of college. And so when I entered the US and as the years went by, started noticing racism, I started noticing people making fun of my accent. It going from, oh, you have a nice accent, to people laughing at my accent when I would read in public. There were instances, there was one instance in my junior year that I walked into my class, some senior year, sorry. I walked into my class with a shirt, white shirt, red stripes and stars for the flag. And they started laughing at me, some of the people there. And they started saying like, I'm sorry for the language, but they started saying like, oh, you're a beaner, why are you wearing that? And I'm serious, that's what they said. And when they say that, they started going around me, they made a circle around me. And they started chanting beaner repeatedly, like laughing and singing it, kind of. And so seeing that kind of stuff made me really shocked. It made me understand that, wow, racism really is a big thing right now. It is, people say, it's always over, we're fine, you know, things were way worse before. No, racism is still a thing and it's still there. And there's still a lot of things that we have to do. But at the same time, I understood what's happening, because I was raised in a traditional Mexican home. And in there, they joke around a lot. And in my community, And in my community, we're predominantly Hispanic. They will see that, those comments as just jokes. But they were not jokes. They're hatred. There's many stories, there's many years, generations of such hatred that have gone on. So much history from that of pain and violence that we just seem to ignore because we're not educated. And so one thing that I want to emphasize with this and why I told you my story is to try not only to educate staff, but just educate the students. Have some kind of like event where they can go and, you know, do things like this in this town hall, which is really beautiful. Pick all the problems. When they can be educated and be like, just because someone is different, doesn't mean they're wrong. Or doesn't mean like, you know, it's just something away from you. It can mean you can be a part of it now. I'm Mexican, yes, and I'm now in the US. It's a different culture, different people, different teachers, different jokes. But I'm getting used to it, and I really love it. But doesn't make me just American. I'm still Mexican. Same thing with everyone is you're gonna get into African American culture. You wanna get into Chinese culture, Japanese culture. You know, instead of being like, oh, it's different, I cannot get in it, be like, you know what, embrace it. Let's go, let's get more culture, let's understand more things, know more people. It was until I understood that, that I was able to be, you know, apply for things such as ASG President and Regional Communicative Officer, when I understood how much love there can be in union, in unity. Students staying together. So I feel like just showing that love to students and training students on, you know, positivity, inclusion, unity. I feel like not only for staff, but just for students, that would be a beautiful thing to do, to educate others such as I was, because I was ignorant once before getting to the US. I was ignorant. I had, you know, I, I always made bad comments about, you know, homosexuals, about, you know, African Americans and things, because I didn't know any better. But then I was educated through experiences and talking to others. And I was able to embrace the love and, you know, embrace other cultures and people. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sharing. We have Mandeeb and then Sharon.
Hi, my name is Mandeeb. I teach Biology at Bu College. So I was born in India. I was raised in India, and I moved to Canada when I was 18. And I was very shy to speak in my classes because I thought I had like this hard accent and people would laugh at me. So I started with ESO classes, then finally I got into actual English class. And then one day I felt this, I had this courage and I started speaking. And none of the Canadian students laughed at me, but one Indian student who was born here started laughing at me. And my teacher asked her what was funny for her. You know, he embarrassed that girl and then encouraged me to talk. And because my teacher encouraged me to talk and kind of like made me comfortable in a class. I teach Biology at Bu College. I'm a full-time professor. So I think teachers make a lot of difference in students' lives. I have gone through a lot, but I encourage you, Jorge, and then also Interpol, I was listening to you. Just keep working on, just if you can, ignore some of the noise. But there are some good people. There are a lot of good people. I had a lot of good teachers. And right now I have a job that people dream for, you know, and then, and we are here. And, and also I have a question for students. Right now I'm writing a book. I'm curating a human biology textbook where I'm changing the pictures, including more pictures of diverse student body that we have and changing the pronouns. So I have a question, how important it is for you guys to see yourself reflected in the pictures and the pronouns in the textbook? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for speaking up, and thank you for those comments and that question. I'm sure some students will have some, some answers for you right now. I'm gonna keep moving on. We, we have Sharon and then Brandon. I mean, you can reference anything in the chat or anything that's been spoken so far.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to be in your space. I really appreciate the invite. I am a AOJ faculty at Gressman College. We just hosted a racial healing circle for our students of color, Black and Brown students, last month. And we're planning and hosting another follow-up racial healing circle. And one, of course, for faculty and staff separately, because we're all traumatized by the experience and the continued systemic racism. I want to hear feedback. What would you recommend us moving forward to be able to infuse or embed in our racial healing circle for students of color on our campus? If you have any thoughts, what do you think that perhaps we may not be seeing to help facilitate, to make sure it's an all-inclusive and impactful racial healing circle for students of color?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think we're gonna get into that in a little bit also. But students start thinking of that, and then please speak out. And we also have Brandon and then Sophia.
Oh, we also have Ms. Ortiz as well. I saw her raising her hand through the camera. She couldn't, she doesn't know how to raise her hand through the, through the little box.
Oh, yes, and then, yes, and then Lorena, sorry.
Hi, y'all. I'm so sorry. I'm gonna discuss about this. I think this is a profound issue at my institution. But the issue of like equalism, discriminatory against like disabled people. Our campus is not well-equipped for ADA accommodation. It lacks it. It's literally up in the hill. And frankly, like, I was, I always have the concept of like, what if this is massive earthquake? And I, it just overwhelming, but also, um, this is goes to the, yeah, like, one, one student came up to me. She told me this story about her professor, her chemistry professor. And basically, her chemistry professor laughed at her because she was dyslexic. And she felt bad about it. And, and she was like, I'm not even, like, she was like constantly like asking herself, like, am I worth being a student because I'm dyslexic? And you know, those, like, that's, that professor literally pushed her to like question herself, question her worth because of a, of, of something. And then, and the other thing is that I have, I have students who come up to me. And it, it comes with the academic scene, the academic institution. But the lack of courses, you know, we are, we, we, we are proud to have like Chicano X, Chicano Studies, teach, teach, studies. But it does not, it does not represent the whole body of student. Because there's lack of Central American courses, there's lack of Asian studies, there's lack of Caribbean studies, there's lack of everything. And I think we should like, as, as, as a, as a student senate, we should bring the importance of, of lack of representation with their culture. Because like my, even my, someone told me, like, I feel like I'm being, I'm being like assimilated to, 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 to this type of culture. Like, my culture doesn't get any type of representation through the, the academia. And that's like an important issue for many students at my campus. Thank you so much for hearing me out.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for sharing again. Sophia and then Lorena.
Hi, thank you guys for allowing me to speak. My name's Sophia. I'm actually from the Rio Hondo College as well. I'm one of the people from the Student Body Government. I just wanted to kind of go back to, a lot of people were commenting on the fact that Black history isn't really well-recognized and it isn't taught very often in schools. I'm a big proponent of education, obviously. It's a big thing. I think a big part of racist comments and actions come from just overall the lack of Black history being taught in schools. And this starts, you know, in elementary. You know, we have to remember that history is a story. And the history books that we have read, and me even, I'm Black. I grew up on history books that began Black history with us coming over as slaves. So we're described as slaves, workers, you know. The history books in circulation fail to kind of humanize Blacks or Africans. You know, before we were brought here, you know, they had civilized lives. I mean, they were trading silver, ivory, diamonds. The history books fail to kind of delve into those contributions from the Black community and everything else. So I think as a result, Black people in history books are just way underdeveloped people with no background story, no honorable mentions. It's like a, it's like a Netflix series, you know, or like, we're Toby from The Office, we're the boring people. Because people don't relate, because they're not properly educated in the real truth and the real history. I don't know if that has something to do with the independent companies that are producing maybe actual history books that include Black history, because they're definitely out there. Maybe they don't receive funding, maybe they straight up don't make money on non-mainstream history books. But we need to keep in mind that only 12 states, 12 states out of the 50 have history standards that include Black history. So that's 38 states, and that's a lot of people that are disconnected from Black culture. So I guess one of the solutions that I wanted to suggest was something really recent. A representative from Ohio recently introduced a bill, Black History is American History Act. It's, it's still in the talks and all that good stuff, but the ideas behind it are pretty good. Where she basically is trying to get people to introduce history books that actually have Black history in them and offer incentives. So maybe like grants, just, you know, supporting the teachers and helping us get educated on that stuff. Because I think a lot of this can be rid of, maybe with just a little bit more education, people that don't understand our culture. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing. Yeah, we, we've heard that. Did you have something, Joseph?
Yeah, can I just pick you back on Ms. Duncan was, was talking about, you know, Black history. We, our history doesn't start with slavery. It does not. A lot of, you know, a lot of people don't understand that or don't know that. And kind of like, you know, like going back to like elementary, like middle school. As a Black student, you know, as a Black man, all I ever was taught was Martin Luther King, you know, Martin Luther King Day, you know. And all these, you know, just little tiny holidays, you know, and a lot of people don't, didn't even know what Juneteenth was. You know, I'm not even gonna lie, like, I didn't know about it until like three years ago, you know?
Wow.
I think that, you know, these African American courses, you know, shouldn't be an option. It should be, you know, I guess a requirement, you know, just as such as English class. And, you know, I think also with, 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 you know, with, you know, the Latinx communities, those should be courses as well, because, you know, I wanna be educated, you know. I wanna be able to, you know, because I grew up in foster care. So all 32 foster families were, you know, from, from, they ran from Guatemalans to, you know, Colombianos. You know, I speak Spanish, so I have a greater, you know, a greater respect, you know? I think that these courses, I think that should be, you know, some that needs to become a requirement.
Awesome. Thanks, Joseph. I'm gonna pass it off to Lorena, and I apologize for not seeing your hand earlier.
It's okay. Hi, everybody. So, you know, I'm, I go to Oxford College, and there's three colleges in our district. And I've been hearing about, you know, how you guys, these students don't have it support at their school. Can't say that about Oxford College. Our, my, our professors, well, the professors that I've had, you know, dealt with and the faculty, they've been so supportive in any type of way, at every level, right? Even our Board of Trustees, you know, we, they invite students, they want more students to be involved. They actually ask for our opinion. We actually held a George, Justice for George Floyd Black Lives Matter at Oxford College. When all this happened, right? This was ASG of Oxford College. And after this happened, the Board of Trustees, they met, they met up with all the faculty, and we came up with the resolution, you know, and it passed, you know, right away. Like, it's, it's been, this has like been the talk about what we're gonna do, right? And one of the things was that we had mentioned in the, in the talk was a one-unit mandated anti-racism eight-week course, right? That teaches racism in America, committing the world. And then one of the students here, Gerald Richardson, also wanted to do a commission with half students. Like, I've been hearing half students and half faculty, so we could keep the communication of what's going on, right? Because some students are not gonna feel comfortable to go talk or feel comfortable to talk to other professors or faculty if they're not being listened to, right? So it's like you put, you're playing both, you, both the students and the faculty, you have both of those, right? Now, the, also you can make the EO, make the EEO stronger and, and emphasize the color blindness, right? You know, me, I, I grew up in a military base. I, we had every race there, from the Filipinos, Samoans, Mexicans, Blacks, you know, everything that you can think of. I've never been asked, what are you, until I moved out of base, right? And my history that I learned, I, the history that I learned, I was taught at home. My mom always said, your real history, that no one's gonna teach you the right way, is gonna be at home. Unfortunately, there's a lot of stuff that I was unaware of in, 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 that I know now in college because we took the courses, right? And it's sad that we don't get taught this at school. Now, there was a webinar that was done over here, and I had my kids join the webinar. And my daughter was like, we don't get taught this at school. Well, we don't get taught this because we were never, they never wanted us to know this stuff, right? So now if we make, if we make petitions and we make movies and we go to like the district and be involved, they can't tell us, no, we have a seat at the district level, at the Board of Trustees, we could all, we have a seat there. The more students, the more we're gonna get heard of, we're gonna get heard. Our voices do count. In the 1960s, when all the civil rights, the students were the more powerful, you know? I always say that students, us students, we have a powerful voice. And there is more students than there is professors and faculty. If we all get together and come together as one, we can make stuff happen. I know at least in our district, we're starting to make stuff happen. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, and, you know, that brings up a great point. Interpol, I'm gonna get to you right now, but, you know, we're sharing all these stories. And what I really want to get into is how can we, or what does it look like? What does change look like then? We have all these stories. We, we've compiled what this looks like, or what the, what the analysis of the problem is. But now let's talk about how, how we can see change? And what is it gonna look like when that change occurs? Like, how can we show that it's actually succeeding? How can we show that the, the change is being successful? So Interpol, I'm gonna get to you, and then we're gonna, we're gonna open that back up. But I want to hear like, all right, if we start developing an action plan, what is it? What needs to be in this action plan? And how will we know that it's actually succeeding? So Interpol, go for it.
So I just wanted to kind of go over the healing process part. There was, as a first-generation student and coming into City College for the first time, I think like something like this town hall is great for hearing stories and then kind of like, like, understanding who people are and then how you relate to them. But as a first-generation student, the lack of resources coming into a college was huge. And what I would like to suggest is that maybe we can develop a way of mandating something on the syllabus in each class, of talking about mental health and discrimination, so that at least we go over it and then providing resources in there. So that if students chose, like, choose to, they can reach out with those resources, resources, without having to actually go out of their way to find stuff, when they don't even recognize there is a problem. And this also gives opportunity for faculty that, you know, not all, some people might just read over the mandated part, but some faculty will speak out and start discussing stories and bring up the topic, which can benefit so many people from hearing what they have to say and realizing and saying, holy, like, wow, this is my first semester, and I recognize a face that I can go to when I have a problem.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah. Let's go to Ashley Brandt, Miracosta.
Yeah, so as far as solutions or possible positive outcomes from this, I saw in the chat, like, people are mentioning places to turn to for, in events like the, they have issues with their professor, faculty, myself included, that was an issue. So maybe having an area where students can go and put in reports on issues where they feel that they're facing microaggressions, or they're like unsure of a situation. And they can keep track of those reports and tally them up and, you know, keep, make sure that this area would be like widely advertised around the campus, so students are aware of this resource. Something like that would be pretty useful. And then like, once they get enough, or just like any significant report on a professor or faculty staff, they could address the person and then kind of go from there.
Awesome. Thank you. How would you say that we're succeeding? Like, how would you know that, that that's being done successfully?
I will, oh, sorry. I'm kind of jumping back into it. Yeah, so like, just seeing people going to it and getting people to report into it. Like, seeing people use that resource would, would to me look like success. The fact that like people are aware of it, people are using it, and that. The fact that like people are aware of it, people are using it and that it's like kind of being taken advantage of once it's set up, kind of thing.
Awesome. Thank you. I have um, Jorge, Gerald and Wendy.
Hi, I feel like a good way we can register um, success in this manner, it, which is hard, uh, because you know, it's, it's rough to be able to like, know how to effectively see that students are all being, you know, like, uh, properly treated, you know, as students, not, you know, through their color, but just as students, because it's what we all are. Uh, I feel like such a good way for that would be probably on the little teacher. Uh, teacher, um, when you, when you kind of like grade your teacher at the end of class, you know what I mean? Like the teacher assessments? I feel like, you know, probably having a question on that, you know, talking about, did you notice anything, you know, uh, racially hurtful in your class? Did you notice, or positively too, did you notice your teacher, uh, your teacher, uh, build a good environment for all students, no matter their race or their culture, to come together? You know, I feel like probably something like that would be a good way to measure our success in this manner. Um, and I feel like also a good way to start being more effective with this, we'll probably just do things like this, but like, you know, adjusting our own colleges. Like, talk to our ASOs, ASGs and just get things like this going. So we can make sure stories are heard and thus people understand that racism is still here, obviously. Because people think it's not, which is really crazy, but you know, we gotta educate each other. Instead of, you know, yelling at each other, we can just educate each other and spread the love, you know? Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, thanks for bringing that up. I, I want to ask though, real quick, do you have a survey for each of your professors at the end of every class? Um, or, or, because on my campus, the way that it goes is I've only, I've been on, uh, in community college back and forth for about four years. I've gone for a year, left, came back. And I've only had to do a survey, I think, twice out of probably the twenties different subjects or twenty different classes that I've taken. Um, and that's because either that professor was up for tenure or, um, you know, they were doing a, like a three-year different review, instead of actually getting a, it, to me, I, I would love to see professors actually getting that constant feedback, you know? I feel like, well, why wouldn't you want to know the areas that you can work in and, and provide feedback for you to succeed better as a professor? So I just wanted to know, do you, do you get those um, um, feedbacks every class that you take?
Most teachers, there's been like a few that haven't, but most teachers that I had do offer that, you know, asking like, how can I teach better? How can I, did you notice anything that you didn't like in the class, or did you like? So we do get those most of the time, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think I just saw in the chat that some teachers initiated that on their own and that might be something we can work with Academic Senate on talking about. Um, but yeah, thank you. Um, I know, I've seen the chat also, um, people are asking about contact info if you want to throw, especially if you spoke today, if you want to throw some contact info in there and some, um, said the organization that you represent or, uh, you know, if you're just part of a, a student union or a student government or a faculty member, just throw that in there. We can definitely publish the chat after, um, the, uh, after the recording's all done. I want to keep moving because we're almost done with time. Gerald and then Wendy.
Um, in response to your first question about what goals can we set and what can the SSC back? I think that we need to mandate that each California Community College have a social justice plan or initiative each year with the goals of diversifying our curriculum to include the history of black, indigenous, Latinx, Asian, and all people of color. I think we need to have mandates and metrics so where we can measure how many staff, faculty and managers that we're hiring that represent diverse backgrounds, racial, ethnic, um, so forth and so on. I think we need, um, the plan to include themes like leadership on racial issues and facilitating social justice through our civic engagement. And I think we need to also kind of reflect on our student equity plans and make sure that we're having culturally responsive student services, counseling, tutoring, mental health spaces for our students. And I think we can measure that by, um, in a year's time, going back to get anecdotal evidence by doing another town hall or even seeing, okay, we're hiring diverse faculty and staff, but are we retaining them? Are we giving them tenure? Things like that.
Awesome. Yeah, those are some great, some great recommendations. Um, and we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep bringing that up. Well, we will have another town hall, um, I'll bring that up in a little while with the date and the time and how you can register for that. Um, Wendy?
Hi, um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for offering this space, um, to listen to students and also just, um, you know, the community and everyone at large. Um, so after listening to all of our students, you know, just speak up about their experiences, I myself am a Latina, you know, single parent of a ten-year-old. I've also, you know, of course, been a student myself. I currently work in a higher ed, um, position. So I just think, I would just like to offer my suggestions when looking at all of these issues, you know, just taking us back on and seeing how these issues stem from a, a whole systemic, you know, um, like stance on like, I guess, working together. I just wanted to kind of focus back on, you know, hiring both black and brown um, people when it comes to the school boards, you know, um, or any board from city college to faculty and staff, because representation matters. So if we want our students to be comfortable and if we want them to raise their opinions, you know, to share their experiences and to get them to a position where they're comfortable enough to, to do these things and to thrive, then they need to see, to be able to see themselves in these positions of, you know, being faculty and staff and sitting on boards that actually make, you know, decisions and that have, that their lives will be directly impacted on. So I was thinking, you know, we need to hold our institutions accountable to see who we hire or who we vote into these positions of authority and of power. Um, thinking about the onboarding, um, you know, the whole operation when we have someone new, you know, join an institution, seeing if they are culturally competent, you know, seeing, um, what trainings they have received, do they know how to de-escalate situations in the classroom? You know, do they know how to professionally, you know, yes, take a stance in racism and be able to make, you know, um, but also to take action on how to better the whole classroom environment, you know, to make it equitable and to make it comfortable for all of our students. Um, and I think that a way we can measure if these actions are successful is seeing graduation rates, retention rates, when it comes to our black and brown um, and students of color, um, at, you know, city colleges. And, um, and also offering a space where they can come and they can either, you know, do their tutoring or just be and feel in community, whether that means having more Omoja centers, whether that means having more ESL centers, um, or for more spaces where it's more inclusive of all ethnics and races on our campuses. Because I myself, in the current, um, place that I work, we lack a Latinx, you know, space where we can, um, just be together in community. And it wasn't until recently that an Omoja center was added. So I think that that is definitely something that all campuses should have. Um, especially because our black students or the statistics aren't very high, um, within our institutions. And I think that maybe also offering more, more ways where we can do outreach, you know, to, to have our students, um, feel welcomed and, and to know about the different clubs and the different programs we have on campuses as well, that's important. Um, so yeah, basically, so just thinking and grounding ourselves back on who it is that we work with and how it is that they are in positions of power is very important. We should have more black and brown faculty, um, and also sitting on boards. And, um, yeah, thank you so much for this space and for allowing us to share our opinions and our suggestions. And I always love listening to our students' stories because that reminds us that this is not an issue that happened once and it's gone. It's an ongoing issue and it's an ongoing thing that we need to work on and hold ourselves accountable to see what we can do to implement, you know, new ideas, new programs, new policies from our place of work. Um, so yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks so much for sharing. Thank you for showing up and providing more student input. Um, I know we have another, um, student that'd like to speak, Marlene. Marlene, whenever you're ready, you can start speaking. I saw a question in the chat that I thought was really good. Um, because it, it applies to me, I'm a very extroverted person. When something comes up and there's an issue that needs to be tackled, I meet it head-on by, you know, going to my administration, talking it out and, and that's just, you know, that, that's second nature to me, that's exactly what I do. But what about for some of our introverted students that don't, um, possess those communication skills and they feel like they, you know, are really, um, they can't express themselves in that way? I, how can we make it easier for them to, um, to speak up and to, to maybe to respond to some of these issues? Marlene, whatever you're ready to, just let me know. I see Ashley Brandt.
Yeah, um, a suggestion for introverts, um, first thing that popped to my mind would be possibly a safe space because I know it's not exactly comfortable going up to any random resource. I know it's usually more comfortable to like talk to people you're more familiar with, so, um, maybe if you're on good terms with like, uh, professor or something. Um, but then that would also involve the professors being more aware of the resources they have on campus. So, um, yeah, just either having a sa- safe space or making sure the faculty are aware of the resources so that they can direct the student where to go. Or if the professor could just send the message along for the student. I mean, not always the best way because sometimes the message gets a little muddled. But thinking about introverted students that aren't very comfortable going up and talking to people they don't know, that might be a good, uh, way, route to go about it.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, something?
Yeah, go for it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, what you mean?
Now, um, it's one thing that I've noticed too, you know, especially right now, because we're all, it's, it's COVID and we're not at school. Um, it's really important for the student body, because the student body of the school are the leaders, right? So people look, look to them, look for them. It's really important for us to really, what, what, where, you know, if, if YE is having an orientation, if EOPS is having an orientation, if Cowworks is having an orientation, whatever clubs are around at your school, ask them, when are they having a meeting? And ASG Council, go and show yourselves and say, hey, my name is so-and-so. If you have any questions, please let me know. Put your information there. Be open to students. I know that, um, some people are not like that, but I've, I've came to, came to find out that certain people, I'm, I'm involved with EAC, I'm involved with Cowworks, I'm involved with EOPS. I'm involved with OC Fridays. I get involved because I used to be a person that didn't know, you know? My mom, she's a, she's, you know, she only knew Spanish, she didn't know. I wanted to be involved, I know where to go, what to do. And because of that, I like to show my face and just smile at somebody. You never know what they, you know, they, they be, they might want to be asking or they might want to do something, but they don't know how, right? Being an EAC student and being involved and working at the EAC, I've noticed that some students who used to be quiet are not quiet anymore. And they actually call me, they call me during the summer and say, hey, how you doing? What classes are you taking? If we, if we put ourselves out there and make our students feel comfortable to come talk to us, it makes them, it makes them grow as a person. It makes them get more involved, you know? So if you get a chance, I know that it's Zoom, I'm an extra, extra, extra extrovert, you know? I have, I need my people because, you know, I suffer from depression. So I need the people to get to me, right? So I could like feel good. I'm learning how, I was forced, I was forced to learn quickly about technology and how computers work because of the world pandemic, right? But that's not gonna stop me. I'm not gonna, I, I don't want this to stop me, make me feel like I can't do it. No, I can't. It might take a little longer, but just be open, get involved. And wherever you guys have meetings and you guys need extra people, call me. I put myself, my information on the, on the chat. I'm able to do two or three meetings within four, four hours apart because, you know, we have Zoom. You know, if we were in person, I couldn't get to LA and up north in an hour. But right here, I could do it. Five minutes, I got you. So get involved, call me if you guys need me.
Awesome. Those are some great comments. Is, is my audio better now? Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing some heads nod, alright. Um, and Lorena, just, just cause, saying this out right now, Region Six, we need some, uh, some students to step up and be part of the SSC in that area. We need a Regional Affairs Director, um, you know, we need Legislative Affairs Director. If you want to get involved at the state level, we'd love to have you. Um, any of the other students definitely on this call also. If you want to get involved in your region, please reach out to us. Um, we'd love to get you involved, sit on some of the statewide committees or even just join your region, um, so we can have this constant communication. You know, we need to have this, you know, this, this tap on the student voice and tap on the student climate and the student culture that's, that's going on in our state. Um, I'm gonna give a last call right now. If you want to get any other comments or stories or anything in right now, um, please do it at this time and then I'm gonna wrap it up. Jorge, go ahead.
Hi.
Hello, hello.
Um, so I'm, uh, as I said before, Region Access Communications Officer and I'm in charge of our Instagram page. And so I was wondering if you guys consent to me taking a screenshot of this so I can post there in our Instagram page? If any of you don't, uh, that's understandable.
Are you good? Come on.
Are we all good? Okay. Say cheese, you know, see you look good, I don't know. Cheese. And, uh, wait, there it is, there it is, okay.
Cool.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Make, make sure you use some filter on my face, okay?
Uh, Wendy, Wendy, I see your hand raised again.
Yes, I'm sorry, I just wanted to share really quick that I forgot to mention, um, that we should also be very intentional about redistributing funds, you know, to go towards student-led organizations and healing spaces on campuses as well. And I think that we can also do, um, something to educate our families and our students on how educational institutions work and how our schools get fundings per students. Because just to briefly share an experience of mine with my ten-year-old daughter, when she was about to start kindergarten at her new elementary school, or when it was that time, um, she was about to be placed in an ESL class, um, for no reason, simply because her last name is Martinez. And, um, because I myself went into the office and I asked, you know, why are you going to be sending my daughter out from her regular class? And they had no answer to me except for saying, oh, it's probably because you marked on your, you know, application that your primary language was Spanish. And I think that that negatively affected her, even though she is fluent in English and in Spanish. So I think that just knowing, um, how things work and how schools receive their funding and why it is that they may do certain things has also been very helpful for myself to know how to better advocate for my daughter and from, um, and to better advocate for our future students and for my friends as well and loved ones. So I think that just having that knowledge and that background really, really helps you to, you know, to find your voice and to make sure you're a part of these meetings, um, such as this one right now and school board meetings, you know? Um, but yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's super important just to get involved, get your voice out there, you know? It's, it's, it's one thing just to be a student, but it's another thing to be a student advocate and to let your voice be known so, so we can actually affect some change. I, I heard somebody else that wanted to speak real quick.
Oh yeah, just kind of picking back on, uh, what Ms. Wendy was talking about, you know, kind of like the reassessment, because, you know, I was placed in special ed, you know, because I had a stuttering speech impediment, you know? But I, I was like super educated in math, you know, and then, you know, just like those reassessments, you know, with, with, you know, being, you know, uh, being playing special ed for, you know, no apparent reason, stuff like that. I think that, you know, is very important, you know? I think that's something that, you know, we could, you know, really push for, towards.
Awesome. Thank you, yeah, Joseph. So I want to wrap this up real quick. Um, as I said, my name is Stephen Kudur. I'm the new president of the Student Senate for California Community Colleges. I've, um, loved being your moderator today. If any of you would like to reach out to me, um, or to the SSC, my email is easy. It's president@studentsenateccc.org. I'll drop it in the chat right now when we're done. Also, um, our executive director, she's there every year. I know we have, we have constant turnover every year with students that are involved with the SSC, but our executive director is there to stay, um, for the next couple of years. That's Jay Adams at studentsenateccc.org, Dr. Julie Adams. Um, she's helped us out a bunch. Um, so we're, we're here to help, please, we'd love feedback on how this went today. Um, if you have more stories, more, more questions, anything like that, please reach out to us. Um, we'd love to, to stay in contact with you. I know you're probably thinking right now, what are our next steps? Alright, you know, we had this, we had this great, I want to thank everybody for being a part of this. This was a great discussion, I loved every minute of it, um, but what happens next? So what we're gonna try and do right now is myself and the rest of the institutional success for people of colored, colored task force, we're gonna take all the notes that we took today. We're gonna develop an action plan based on this listening tour and some of the other resources that we have. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna And what we're gonna do is we're gonna report out and we're gonna receive, we're gonna actually receive more feedback during our next town hall. That's August 21st at noon. August 21st is a Friday. It's at noon. We'll send out another flyer. You can, you know, use a QR code and sign up for that. It's gonna be something like this, but we're gonna have more tangible, from, from what we heard today, we're gonna have more tangible action plan. And we're gonna want feedback on that action plan and how we can, you know, gauge the success of that action plan and maybe add some more things and tweak it a little bit. So we really want the student perspective there. We're gonna present that action plan to the delegate assembly on September 4th, 2020. So if you're a part of your student government, make sure that you have a vote. Get your advisors to confirm your delegates so that way you can be a part of that meeting and vote on that action plan. So that way we can move it forward to our system partners and to Chancellor's Office and to the Board of Governors. We're gonna present that action plan also to the Consultation Council, which is the committee that, that refers items to the Board of Governors. We're gonna do that on September 17th. So between now and then, we're just gonna be doing some diligent work, making sure the student voice is heard. Because as we were talking earlier, the student voice holds power, y'all. Like, it is a powerful voice. We have so many, we're 2.1 million students. Like, we're the, the highest form of, of higher education right now, you know? And that's why we're here. That's why we're here to collaborate, so we, so that we can be heard. So thank you so much for being on this call. I wanna thank the students personally, you know, just for signing up and showing up. That's, that's the first part, just being here to hear your voice. Thank you so much for that. And to the faculty members that were on here too, thank you for being a part of this, you know? Like, us as students, we exist to learn and you're helping us in that, in that area. And I know that, you know, from this conversation, you can also learn from what you took from, from today and, and take that back to your colleges. And, and I just wanna thank you. I appreciate every single one of you that were on this call. But yeah, see you for now. Reach out to us. Yeah, it's been a great day. Enjoy the rest of your Tuesday.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Hope you all have a great day.
Okay, everyone. We'll definitely post this also to the Student Senate website with the, with the chat included. So definitely get your, get your info in there.
Yeah, I'm gonna hang around here for a little bit, you know, if you guys have any, you know, questions or, you know, feel free.